We'll get started if you could all stand and we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our clerk, Martin Brook, will take care of swearing in two very experienced members of the zoning board of appeals who are starting new terms this year.
Great, thank you. Briefly, good evening. My name is Martin Brook. I'm the Bloomfield Township clerk. And one of my greatest honors and privileges is the opportunity to administer oaths of office to various members on commissions and boards, police officers, new board members, and so forth. So it's a very exciting opportunity. At Ford and I shared a time on the school board, and I'll be going to the school board at their next meeting to swear on the new board members at the school board later this month. So, you know, these commissions and the zoning board are so important to our community, and I want to thank you on behalf of the Board of Trustees for the time that you put on this important board. You know, more than, roughly 12 meetings a year. Last year, you guys handled almost 300 different petitions from members of the community. And that's, I've seen your packets, read the packets, you've all probably seen the packet tonight. I mean, it's extensive. It's a lot of homework to come here and do this on behalf of the residents of Bloomfield Township. Of course, you're appointed by the Board of Trustees, but you're an independent body, making your own decisions on behalf of the members of the community and interpretation of the zoning code. So it's important work, it's hard work, and thank you for doing it, and thank you for staying on this for so long. Tonight, I'm going to swear on Jocelyn and Bob for, was this your third term, Jocelyn?
I think so.
And Bob, back again. I know you've served for many years before, so your experience is greatly appreciated. Without further ado, if you'd both stand up, we'll get you both done at the same time. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
I'm Jocelyn.
Do some, I swear.
Do some, I swear.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I'll support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And I'll support the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I'll support the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
And I will faithfully discharge my duties.
In Bob's case, as an alternate member, in Jocelyn's case, as a regular member.
As an alternate member.
And as a regular member.
Of the zoning board of appeals.
Of the zoning board of appeals.
For the charter township of Bloomfield.
For the charter township of Bloomfield.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you very much. Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Martin, thank you very much. You always do a wonderful job with that responsibility. I'd also like to note that we have with us this evening Chris Kolinsky to my left, who's a newly elected trustee who serves on the zoning board. He is our liaison to the Board of Trustees, so our boards and commissions are set up to work together effectively. So with that, let's take attendance.
So noted.
And I would like a motion or comment on the zoning board of appeal minutes for December 10th, 2024.
So moved.
So that's, we have a motion to approve the minutes as drafted?
Support.
Okay, and support. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. So as a brief introduction, the zoning board of appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees per the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the zoning board of appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the zoning board of appeals is subject to circuit court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium. Address your comments to the board and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. All right. I also need to let you know that items 2P, 1781 Gulf Ridge, and item 5, 3959 Shellmar have been postponed and will not be heard tonight. And then what's the status of item 11? Are we going to hear that, or?
Correct. I had a conversation with the applicant, and my understanding is that the gate is exactly as it was prior.
Okay, so we're going to go forward with item 11.
Correct.
4612. Okay. So with that, let's call the first item, 1P, 3327. Is the applicant ready? 3327 Dogland.
Good evening. How is everybody?
Wonderful.
On a cold, one of our first real cold winter days. I'm here, my name's Charles Dunn, and I'm here for Mr. David Knapp, the landowner. And we appreciate the time with the community to allow us to come and make our case for a variance. I don't want to burden you with going through the whole application, but the fact is that we're looking for a fence. The reason for the fence is Mr. Knapp has nieces and nephews that are young, and he wants to, you know, create a safe space. And he's also the owner of three dogs. And he wants to keep those dogs in such a manner that he doesn't get dog-at-large issues, and he's a conscientious owner, and that is, you know, part of the issue also. The design of the fence that's here, as you can see, it's kind of a very awkward lot. It's on a cul-de-sac, and it's, the surrounding area makes it very interesting. It almost looks like it's kind of a landlocked there, but there's a lot of trees. The design of the fence is purposeful and is conscientious to make use of the existing property in the confines that exist with this type of lot, but at the same time, considers the neighbors. And basically, the one main namer, you can see that neighbor on that lot on the east side, there's a line of arborvitae's there, and we had put that in in such a manner that we didn't want to have.
If you want, if you want to hold that down and just let it in.
On that side. It was designed where that 66 is in a manner to make sure that there is no damage to existing arborvitae's by stacking arborvitae's or growth on growth. And that was one of the reasons why we put it where it was at. My client is a very conscious, conscientious dog owner. He has invisible fences, but he feels that those are, it's just they're not adequate. There was an occasion where one of the dogs got at large, and he doesn't want to have that. He wants to make sure that there's, you know, he's had the dogs for quite a long time, and he wants to make sure that that's not an issue. So I think it's a balance, from my client's standpoint, on the design of the fence and taking care of the neighbor's concerns also. You cannot, from the roadway, you cannot see the fence at all. And you, from any of the other properties, you also can't see the fence, except on that east side that I just showed you. Mr. Knapp also owns the property on the rear. Okay? So there is a small setback variance that's requested, but it's very minimal, and he owns that property, so we don't, and you can see all the trees, these, all these, it's just overgrowth area from here, here. So this fence, other than the east side, cannot be seen, but on the east side, it can't be seen because of the neighbors have a whole line of arborvitae's, and there's a picture of that in your packet. So I guess with that, you know, we think it meets the requirements of the ordinance, and, you know, we are asking for approval on this matter. We would take any questions you'd have. I know you've probably spent considerable time looking at the packet, and I think you can see right there that there's, that the line that we're talking about on the neighbor's arborvitae's, and those are the ones we want to protect by not stacking, putting other vegetation, because you would have a westward view of the sun coming down. Also, on the east side, if we were to move the fence in, we wouldn't have enough room to put this gate in, to even access the area. And so that would be an issue with the side. So it's not only the saving of the arborvitae's and making sure that we protect the existing arborvitae's of the neighbor, but that because of existing landscape, we would have no room to put that gate in.
Patty, I have a question.
Yes?
You mentioned three dogs. Is there a light dog license issue?
We'll have to address the number of dogs. In some cases, if there is a senior or declining dog, there is some consideration, but we'll have to address that with the property owner.
What? We have no outstanding dog issues with the township.
So I think I know the answers from reading the materials, but what are the breeds of the three dogs?
I really don't know. I know that there, that one or two of them are pit bull mix, but, you know, they're all, you know, from the standpoint of rescue dogs, you know, they're mutts. So I don't think you could really say they're any one breed.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so given the stature of the dogs, is there a reason why it's six foot high?
The neighbor requested that. We put a four foot in, but the neighbor requested we do a six, and we, they wanted to make sure that the dogs couldn't jump the fence, and we didn't think they could jump a four-foot fence, but we put the six in to accommodate the neighbors.
I have a question. This picture here, there's a dog in it, is that one of the dogs? Or is that just a generic?
Just a drawing.
Picture for?
Yeah, that's generic.
I wasn't sure.
And the arborvitae's also is a generic picture.
Chris, did you, do you have a question?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Can we go back to the photo where it outlines where the fence is going to be? What is the distance between the side, on the eastward side, where you're talking about that four-foot gate, where there would be no other gate option if we would not grant your variance? What's the distance between the house and the property line?
I can answer that. It's Randy from Action Fence. So it's 30 feet, however, there is probably 10 or 12 feet of landscaping off the house that doesn't allow like a gate. You'd have to completely rip it all out if you moved it over the 16 feet that would be required. You just wouldn't have enough room for the gate in there. Because you need something to get the lawnmower back there.
So, yeah, and that's why you went with the four-foot gate versus the three-foot gate, but, so there is 30 feet side yard there, and you're asking for a 16-foot variance to go to the property line. That's correct.
Yes.
And then which neighbor was it that asked for the six-foot fence?
The east side, I believe. Right there.
What else?
It would be the south. It's, you can't, at an angle, you see the north, so it would be.
The parcel 1912, 476, 023.
02, I believe 023. The middle one? That one?
That one.
024? 024.
024 is the one. So the person who actually has the arborvitae's and has the zero, the fence will be on the property line, is not the one that requested it. Correct?
Yes. Is that correct?
So any other questions from the board?
Thank you.
I just, I'm sorry, did you have a comment?
No, no.
Just so the public knows, typically, this is a seven-member board. We had a couple of illnesses tonight, so four votes are required for any man. There's only five here, so we'll kind of deal with that on a case-by-case basis, but it is a, it is a meeting where we don't have the full board. So I'll open this to the public now. Anyone that would like to comment on this item? So if you would like to step to the podium, give us your name and address.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Hall. I'm an attorney, and my office is at 344 North Old Woodward in Birmingham. I represent Mr. John DeGiulio. Mr. DeGiulio and his wife are here this evening, and we support the application. And in fact, Mr. DeGiulio owns a home that abuts the home of Mr. Knapp, and he's the one that asked for the six-foot fence.
So what is his address?
John?
3324.
3324.
Okay.
West. This, this application is to resolve a dispute between Mr. Knapp and Mr. DeGiulio involving one of Mr. Knapp's dogs named Ruby. The six-foot fence is needed to prevent the dog from going onto the property of not only Mr. DeGiulio, but some of the other neighbors who are here this evening and are ready to voice their support for the application. In the past, there have been incidents where the dogs that are owned by Mr. Knapp, namely Ruby, have gone onto the property of some of the neighbors and have acted aggressively. And this is, in fact, has resulted in litigation. And so the way we're trying to resolve this is to, is to have the six-foot fence. We feel the four-foot fence would be insufficient. These are large dogs. They have the ability to jump a four-foot fence in our mind, and that's why we've asked for a six-foot fence. Mr. DeGiulio, he'd like to make some comments now if that would be appropriate, so.
As long as they're succinct and to the point, sure.
Okay.
So my name is John DeGiulio, and address 3324 Westchester Road, just abutting the corner, that's the yellow fence there. And we support the variance because it's dangerous to go in our backyard. We're afraid, my wife and I, my family are afraid to go into the yard because of the pit bull breed mix, large aggressive dogs, one which attacked me. I was able to fend him off with a shovel. And the same dog apparently bit some of the landscaping people around there. So we are just trying to make things safe.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? If you could look to the podium and give us your name and address.
My name is Roger Timm. We live at 3344 Westchester Road, which is the second property up. The backyard is also adjacent to the Knapp property.
And you provided us with an extensive letter, which is in our packet.
Two of them.
Yep, two of them, yep.
We, we submit, we support the application with some modifications. We agree that six-foot fence is necessary because everything I've read about pit bulls suggests that they are easily able to, does this project this if I put it down here?
It can, yes.
We also, no, I got to get it down far enough. We also think that there needs to be a cement barrier underneath the fence because pit bulls, as set forth in my Google search here, are capable of digging under fences, and they're strong and determined dogs with a digging instinct. They have natural digging behavior, they have strength and determination, and the only way you can preclude that is if you pour basically a cement layer, put the fence on top of it so the pit bull can't dunk, dig underneath the fence. The requirement for a variance is need. Here's the same map I drew on the green lines, which are the 16-foot setback. There's absolutely no reason why that east side fence can't be set back 16 feet. If he has to move some vegetation that he's planted, move it. He wants dogs that are a danger to everyone else in the neighborhood. My wife and I also don't go in our backyard for the same reason. We don't want to be attacked by pit bulls. There's no reason that that fence shouldn't be 16 feet away, and he's got plenty of room to put a gate in between the house and the fence. I don't care if it goes back to the back lot line. Nobody lives back there. It's a sweat, wetland. The north side, apparently he owns it anyway, so if it goes all the way back, he can be 16 feet away from the side on both sides, comply with the 16-foot variance, and keep the pit bulls away from the rest of us. If he plants his arborvitae or whatever planting he wants around the fence as he's required to do, he buries the fence, there's not going to be any vegetation incompatibility because it's going to be a 16-foot away, and we won't have to look at the fence. It's also, from what I've read, pit bulls look out, and if they see something interesting, like the people who are immediately adjacent, the Johnsons have two small boys under five, five years old. They're the ones that planted the arborvitae because they were scared, but they don't have the obligation to protect against his pit bulls. He has the obligation to protect us against his pit bulls. So there should be, there should be plantings six feet high at least on both sides of that green line, 16 feet away. Accordingly, this is what we propose should be done. The fence should be at least six foot high. There should be a concrete footing installed under the fence. The fence should be located 16 feet from both side lot lines, and there should be a continuous row of evergreens at least six foot high around the whole fence so the pit bulls can't see out and we don't see in. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? So I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the applicant to respond to any of the comments that were made. Counsel?
First of all, with respect to the initial comments, Mr. Knapp was putting in a fence regardless, and he is now accommodating a request from the neighbors to make it six-foot fence. I don't want to get into allegations that the dogs attacked. The dogs have never bit anybody, and the dogs have never hurt anybody, never injured anybody, and that's not, that's not an attack. So, you know, to throw those words out loosely, did the dog get out? Yeah. And this is, he doesn't want the dogs to get out, so we're putting in a fence, okay? But that's not the reason we're putting in the fence. That is one of the reasons we're putting in a fence, but that is not the sole reason why we're putting in a fence. Obviously, there's ordinances about dogs at large, misdemeanors. My client doesn't want to have that, okay? And of course, he wants the neighbors to be safe and himself to be safe, and there's never been any injuries, and there's never been any bites. Now, with respect to the latter issues, in the application, there's a description of the fence, and the fence, in fence terminology, has a spiked bottom, okay? It's not a flat bottom. The dogs, you know, this hearsay, they're diggers. What, what dog's not a digger? Okay? We're putting the fence in to make sure that the area is safe and the dogs don't get out. The last thing Mr. Knapp wants is going to observe the dogs digging, and he's just going to let them go. It's, it's, it's generally owners, you know, the responsibility, not the dogs. The dogs act like dogs. The fence he's putting in has spiked bottom, okay? So no dog is going to go, he's going to rip his back up, okay? These are not vicious, dangerous dogs. Those are another, those are other legal terms of art, okay? Obviously, some of the public comments are leaned toward, they don't, they don't want the dogs. It's nothing to do with the fence. They, they just don't want their neighbors having any dogs. And, you know, that is what it is. There's not much we can, we can say about that. These dogs have been there for a while, there's companions, and they have, they're, there has not been repeated incidences of the dogs doing anything. However, my client doesn't want to have any issues whatsoever, and so that's basically why he's addressing it. The issues with safety and cannot really be correlated either with the variance, okay? Because if you believe what they say, if the dog gets out, so it's going to go 10 feet, okay? I mean, it's, if the dog gets out, we can't have the dogs getting out, and we understand that. And that's, that's why we're doing that, putting, one of the reasons we're putting the fence in. And in addition, even though these, these dogs, there's no way they could scale a four-foot fence, but they want a six-foot fence, we'll put a six-foot fence in, okay? It's, you know, we want to be a good neighbor, and we want to be conscientious, and we want to be conscientious dog owner, too. And I mean, clearly, there's confines to this property.
What about the suggestion of pulling the fence in from the property line on both the sides?
Well, as, we addressed that right off the bat, that that's, that's, that's going to be an issue, and I don't know how it gets anybody any safety, okay? That's a matter of how is, how is the property going to look in aesthetics. I think with the gate and then with the existing landscaping, you know.
Yeah, so part of the challenge is you have to screen the fence. You can't rely on screening from your neighbors in your presentation. It appears that's what you're suggesting that you're going to do.
Well, out of the box, we think that, that putting, putting in, moving the fence and putting in screening could have an effect on the neighbor's vegetation, which we don't want to have. If in fact, the board is inclined to have additional screening put in, we would be amenable to moving it such that it would affect that, okay? If that's, if that's where you're going. But we, out of the box, we were thinking we were doing the right thing by not affecting their vegetation. But if you're so inclined, like, you know, it's, it's something that, that.
And just last thing, what is the status of litigation? Is it still open, or has it been settled?
Oh, it's all settled. It's all settled and, and, you know.
Any other questions from the board?
I had, I had a couple. Comment was made that there's existing invisible fence on the property?
Yes, there is.
Is it active?
It's active. Yeah.
Is it, is it, do the dogs wear their collars?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Just, I'm just asking.
There's one, one.
Yeah.
One got out.
And, I understand. I'm, I'm just trying to make sure it completely.
Trying to get all the facts. Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Sure.
And I would observe, I think your observation that moving the fence in, in and of itself doesn't eliminate the issue that's really what we're trying to address. So the location of the fence isn't going to make it easier or harder for the dog to jump or dig.
That, that was my point, yeah.
The observation I am going to make, however, is that it is your absolute obligation to screen the fence. You cannot rely on the neighbor. Should they cut theirs down, there would be no screening. You have to provide for that consequence. So I would suggest that however much space is required, that that fence on the, I guess, arguably the east side, be moved in to some extent so that six-foot-high arborvitae, in addition to the already existing arborvitae on the neighbor's property, can be planted. And I would also suggest that the root system of those babies is probably going to keep anybody from digging under anything successfully. Whether that's accurate or not, I don't know, but that's been my sense in trying to deal with trying to pull these darn things out once, once they're there. As for the fencing on the other side, it requires screening as well. I understand the gate provision as it is. If the neighbors want six feet, that's fine, but it really isn't what we like to see, so complete screening is going to be required, except for where the gate is.
Okay.
And with that, I'm going to make a motion.
All right, so just, just so we help out, because again, he needs four votes here.
I understand.
I'd say I would, I would be okay with that concept if it's moved in and screened, so.
I am as well. I am not in favor at all on the property line. I don't think that's appropriate.
Yeah.
I don't think two feet is appropriate, though. We, the need, this is a want, not a need. He has 30 feet. In some properties, when they're, already have a variance for the property, they can't allow it for 16 feet. So in my mind, it does have to come in considerable. Now, what the board thinks is appropriate.
Well, we're the board, so that's why, at all, I'm trying to, I'm trying to help the applicant.
Four, you want five?
Yeah.
What do you want? You only need enough to, you only need enough to plant the arborvitae.
Well, but his point is, he's, he's saying there's enough room for the dog back there, and. Well, but his point is, he's saying there's enough room for the dog back there, and we're giving him a variance with all these other issues in place, so moving him back farther would be preferable, is what I'm hearing.
So the reason they don't want to do 16 feet is landscaping. While it is some type of hardship...
It's someone's self-created.
That's self-created, in my mind, as well as we're trying to accommodate both litigation as well as neighbors' requests.
Yeah, but I guess, my observation is a sense of balance. Why is it okay for the fence on the west to be as close to the lot line as it is when the one on, and the one on the east cannot be?
We can do both.
I would suggest that the one on the east needs to come in enough to accommodate a row of hedging, but to pull it in further, which then starts to address additional issues and could impact the ability to get back there and do proper landscaping.
Are two gates necessary, in your opinion, Bob? I mean, as long as we can get back there, doesn't it matter?
As long as you can get back there, but you've got to be able to get back there with a decent piece of equipment. I mean, if you're...
They're four-foot gates, Bob, right?
I understand.
If we've got a really good, if we've got a really good four-foot gate on the...
Well, I guess my observation is, Chris, you make the motion.
I'm good.
Never mind.
Thank you, Bob.
So all I'm trying to do is help the applicant, so in the event that, you know, you could have two more people that might look at this, so that's why I'm trying to be fair or give them the best opportunity.
Chris and I would like this on the accessory's board of view.
So I consent to pass this review, so...
Can we clarify? You had brought up the moving the fence and the screening. Okay, we're talking about on the east side, moving that in.
I haven't made my motion yet.
You haven't made a motion yet.
Right. But that's what I'm...
I'm talking general, just generalities.
We would move the fence in on the east side a number of feet to accommodate the planting of arborvitae there, but also understand that on the west side, you have to plant arborvitae, and between the road, between Dogwood Court and the fence, you have to plant arborvitae because the fence needs to be screened. The only place you can't screen the fence is where you have the gate.
The, I want to clarify that on the west side, that's all wooded area. It's naturally screened.
But is it wooded area on your side of the fence, on the property line, or is it wooded area on the neighbor's side of the property?
No, on our side. That's why it's off a little bit.
Okay.
Because that's where the, that's the line of vegetation. And same thing in the back, but of course, Mr. Conop owns...
I understand.
The back property, but it's the same thing. It's very, excuse me, it's very densely wooded on that area. In that, let me, on that west side gate, or that, you know, on the west side of the house, that is just a walk. We could not get any equipment through that.
Okay, so let me go ahead and formulate a motion. We are sufficiently familiar with Robert's Rules of Order. We can always amend the darn thing.
Yep.
Sure.
So I'm going to make, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion regarding the request for a dimensional variance and a permission request at 3327 Dogwood Court. It's been a while since I've done one of these. Let me find the right stuff. We'll do the...
Be right back in.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, you always make me do it. I'll do the permission request first, because if you don't give them permission, there's no sense in asking for the other. So in regard to the appeal for the accessory structure, which is the six-foot fence, the six-foot fence in general, I guess, is the permission request.
The enclosure, yes.
I move the request be approved with some, approved as submitted based on some modifications I will provide. The applicant did demonstrate all compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The use of the accessory structure is, in fact, requested by the adjoining neighbors. My modification to the request, oh, that's in the dimensional part, okay, so I'm just going to leave that part there, all right. With regard to the dimensional variance, and there are two, I have the setbacks and I have the height. In regard to the appeal, I move the variance be approved as provided, as requested with some modification based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance, and would be unduly burdensome because, in fact, it would violate an agreement with the neighbors on the height. And the location is going to be modified, but does need to be such that there is sufficient room for the animals to recreate. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because we are going to make some modifications. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated because of the situation of the house and the setbacks, the reason to have appropriate accommodation for the yard, none of which, I believe, is self-created and needs to be addressed to accommodate the need, excuse me, accommodate the family and the adjoining families so that they may feel safe. With that having been said, however, the setbacks on the easterly side need to be at least five feet from the lot line to accommodate the arborvitae. The other placement, as presented, is sufficient. There needs to be arborvitae, there needs to be additional ground screening added on the east side to fully screen the fence up to six feet and on the side where the gate is, with the exception of where the gate is. Does that make sense?
I think so, but I think we're going to discuss it, so we...
I suspect we will.
Yeah, so we have a motion.
At least we have something to discuss.
Yeah. Do we have, any support for the motion?
Support.
All right, so a motion is for it, so let's discuss it. So I think that the fence needs to come, I agree with Chris, I think the fence needs to come farther off that east property line. I'd say 10 feet would be...
I'm kind of there. I don't, I haven't come up with how much feet, but I, I'm failing to move it in a bit, a little bit more than five feet. I mean, five feet doesn't seem...
So what, we need a number, though, to put in the motion.
I'm going with 10 feet. That was my minimum.
So somebody needs to make a motion to amend.
I would like to make a motion to amend that the dimensional variance on the easterly side would be a minimum of eight feet, I mean, sorry, 10 feet, excuse me, and again, would continue to be sufficiently screened with arborvitae and a minimum of eight feet on both the east side and west side of that property.
We need support for the motion. Need support for the amendment?
Motion and support.
Discuss the amendment.
So discuss the amendment. I think, and I'll just, because I can't make motions here, it needs to be clear that the screening needs to be to the height of the fence with evergreen planting, so it's 12 months...
That's an obligation.
Yeah, but I want to make sure they understand that.
Okay.
Yeah, I understand.
I thought I had it in my mind.
All right, so is everybody good? So we're going to vote on the amendment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now we have your motion amended.
Correct.
So is everybody clear on what we're voting on now?
Yes.
Okay. So is the staff clear on what we're voting on? Are you clear on what we're voting on now?
10 feet with sufficient screening on the east.
Which means it's got to be to the height of the fence at the time of planting evergreen.
Okay. And just to clarify, not just the east.
Right, it's got to be the whole fence.
East, west, and anything that faces Dogwood.
Well, yeah, so if the west, if there's not evergreen plantings over there, I don't know, what, is that, is that vegetation?
It's just, it's...
It's uphill.
Okay.
It's dense forest.
Yeah. So you can't...
On our property.
So here's what the standard is, is the fence has to be screened from public view 12 months out of the year. So that's the standard.
Perfect. There you go.
And you can't use your neighbors' screening for that purpose, okay?
We didn't.
No, no, but I'm just saying, for purposes of granting this variance, right, if for some reason those die or taken out, you've got to screen it. The screening has to be on your property.
Right. Our assumption is on the west and the north side, sufficient screening exists right now.
But that's not what the chairman's saying. The chairman is saying you have to provide the screening. We cannot rely on the neighbors.
Well, but what you're saying is on the west, it's yours, and on the north, it's yours, and on the east, you're going to put it in.
Yes.
Stating that he's complying.
Exactly. And we're using our property.
So I think we're good.
That's not deciduous, that's, you know, nobody can, on the west side, nobody can see that fence. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yep.
That's the requirement.
Screened 12 months out of the year.
12 months out of the year.
Yep, right now.
Okay, so counsel, counsel, if you need to move that, the western fence in further so you've got enough room to put in whatever is required for screening so that nobody sees that fence ever, 365 days a year, I suggest you do that.
There is, we are confident that the screening existing on our property meets the requirement.
Yeah, so it's in the motion, if ever, you know, just so you're not noticed, ever in the motion, it dies.
I got it, no, I appreciate you making sure I know. Yep, yeah, I got it.
This is, you know, litigated matters, we're just trying to get it right. All right, so is everybody ready to vote on the motion?
Yes.
All right. So all those in favor of the motion as amended and clarified, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request as modified is granted.
Thank you. Appreciate your time, as I stated in the beginning.
Thank you, counsel. So calling item 3P 4390 Oak Grove Drive.
Thank you for having us. My name is Norris Nager. This is my wife, Dolly Nager, 4390 Oak Grove Drive. Excuse me. We are seeking approval for a variance to put a generator on the west side of our house over there. It's located near our garage, doesn't have any windows there. And we are doing this because we lose power if there's 10 mile per hour winds, 20 mile hour. We lost power three times this summer, and last week, we lost power for a week during February, I think. And I don't want to stay in my mother-in-law's house anymore because that's what we ended up having to do for seven days. It's the last thing I want to do. We are encroaching, I believe, four feet into the setback, and we're here to discuss our case and hopefully get an approval.
Okay, any questions from the board?
Why is that location necessary, as opposed to the rear of the house?
Very good. On the east side of our home, we have neighbors that has no vegetation at all. On the north side, same thing, no vegetation. If you want to go back to the aerial map picture, so north side, we've got our neighbor, Paul, there. You can see it's wide open over there. On the east side, we've got our neighbor, Mick. It's wide open there. We were contemplating on putting it somewhere here. Issue was noise, being so close, vegetation acoustically didn't make sense. The four little kids will probably trip over it and can't really have that. And we have windows all along the north side of our, and we don't want that carbon monoxide leaking into, you know, one of our rooms or the kids' rooms. The east, I'm sorry, is that west, west side, right, is that west side? All right. The west side, closest home, past the woodlands, I measured around 200 feet minimum using Google Earth. It's an estimation, but in the wintertime, if you guys saw the winter picture, you cannot see any homes behind the area. And in the summertime, it's, we just found out we had neighbors when it became wintertime because it's like, is that a light over there? You know, we saw it at night, but you can't see a thing over there. So acoustically and aesthetically, it makes the most sense for both those reasons.
Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to the public for comment. Does anyone like to comment on this item? I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the board for... Oh, sorry.
If I may.
Sure.
My name is William Wickers. My wife and I live at Foreman Drive, and we're immediately to the west of the neighbors. And...
5565?
Yeah, 5565 Foreman, I'm sorry. And I'd like to address a few of the pictures you've seen and some of the material presented there, as well as some what I'll call discrepancies that I think exist that you should be aware of before you reach any decision on this request. I want to start off by saying I certainly sympathize with anybody who wants to have a backup generator on their property, and many of my neighbors do. It's very unpleasant to experience an electric outage. At one time, I worked for Detroit Edison, now DTE, and I'm certainly familiar with the problems related to that and that people have with those things, so I'm not unsympathetic. But I've got some issues with some of the items here. Can we see the first picture that was put up? Okay, that one right there. For example, this particular picture, on here, it isn't identified. This was prepared, oh, let me do one other thing before I start. This will make it much easier for everybody. Can you make sure that each of them...
Sure.
Thank you very much. The picture that was, the first one that the neighbors put up, if we can go back to that, is this one. And the problem with that is that it tends to show or suggest that there is a good deal more room on the left-hand side or the west side of their property for the placement of a generator or anything else than there is on the east side. If you'll check page number nine in the packet that I handed out, which is this page right here, if we want to put it up on the screen. This is actually a scale drawing, taken, as you can see, from official records. And it clearly shows that there's much less room on the west side of the neighbor's property for one of these generators than there is on the east side. There's a good deal of distance there available, as well as in the back, although I know that since this was described, there's also a sports, I'm not sure what you call it.
Court.
Cat or...
Sports court?
Place, sports court in the back. So I don't know how much that may obstruct things. If it can't be placed in the back, for whatever reason, there seems to be adequate room on the east side for a generator to be placed instead of being on the west side. And then if we can go to the first picture in mine, thank you. This is a view of their property from mine. This is in my yard, looking east towards their property. And as you can see, it's quite visible. There's no screening there at all, or very little, at least, near that property. Their picture, they have a couple of pictures. If I can see yours. Right here, do we go? Which way do you go? Right or left? Okay, right here.
It's on the screen.
Okay, that picture on the left does not look west. It looks primarily north and a... a little west of north, so that really doesn't show the view of our property and our house from the neighbor's property. If you take a look at the picture on the right, you'll see some posts along there, on the right, but if you look at my pictures, this is on page three. Thank you. I was going to do some landscaping in the back this past year, and I had my property line surveyed by Novak and Fraus, and they're well-known professional surveyors, they staked property line, as you can see. When, and I put in T-posts on my property right next to those surveyor stakes, T-posts, as you know, are, are pretty well-fixed in the ground, they're hard to get out once you put them in, the reason I did that is so you can put string across there to determine the line when you go and do something like putting in landscaping. If you'll notice in the picture that was presented by the neighbors, those are gone. This was in August, the picture that they showed you was sometime probably in late October, because it was submitted to you, I think, on November the 5th. As you can see, those stakes suggest that the property line is quite close to their house, and it is. If you'll take a look at my page four. It shows a scale drawing of. Let's do it this way. There we go. A scale drawing to show you how close it is, each of the squares represents one foot. The neighbor, the neighbor's, Nager's house is already within the 16-foot setback by quite a distance, that's to the outside wall, the dark line in the center is to the outside wall, doesn't consider any roof overhang, 16 feet is there. 10 feet, as you can see, their house encroaches on that 10-foot, as it is, about a foot, that's a measured distance, which I measured with a laser measurer, along my property line, at, at where, about where they want to put the generator. Nine feet is about the actual distance, so they're actually asking to encroach further than, than it's suggested in the documents that they provided, and I don't understand, really, why they're doing this on this side at all, it, it really.
So, so could you start to wrap, so I'm, my understanding is, so you, you feel there's another, better location for it, and I guess.
I think the other side of their house is better, and I'll show you one of the reasons.
And I guess you're also disputing the, the size of the variance, you're saying what their, their home is actually closer to your property line than what.
Yes, and I'll, I'll get to my ultimate point here in just a minute.
Okay, yeah, so.
I can show you why, I think it's, it's really strange that they're requesting this. As you know, a generator should be placed fairly close to the existing electric service, there's a transfer switch involved, and it needs to be near there.
But, but we just need to hear the impact on you, which I think we've understood, and, you know, we'll, we'll ask the applicant as to why they've chosen that location, so if you could just wrap up then with, with your points on, on the impact on you.
Well, the impact on me is pretty well-described, right here, I think you, Mr. Chairperson, mentioned in, in the prior case, that a person can't rely on their neighbor's property, and the screening, the vegetation there, it has to be on their own property, this is required to be screened, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, here's the problem. The, the, there are certain clearances required here, the manufacturer and the National Fire Protection Code requires a three-foot clearance to any vegetation, okay? That puts the vegetation, if it's planted right there, just two feet, a little more than two feet from my property line. Now, if anybody wants to go from the front of their house to the back on this side of the house, they can't get past there, what are they going to do? They're going to come on my property in order to go by, I don't like that, and I don't think that's appropriate, and I don't think it's fair to impose that burden on me, and I think for that reason in particular, it shouldn't go there, and they have the opportunity to put it on the other side. The reason I put this picture up, and I said, I don't understand why they're doing this, is that one of the reasons that they gave for putting it where they did is they wouldn't have to put landscaping in, and their landscape plan shows no landscaping, I can show you that picture, but you have it available there in that package, okay, I, there's no landscaping, they wanted to avoid the expense of putting it in, which they'd have to do on this side as well, but, problem with them putting the generator on the west side, or the left side here of their property, is that if you look at the lower picture, their electric service is on this right-hand side, here, and their gas service, the main gas service at least, is right there, they're going to have to run all of that, all the way over to the other side of their house, in order to install a generator over there.
So, we'll get that information from the applicant, if you could just wrap up now.
That's a, that's a very expensive undertaking, so I just don't understand.
Okay.
That's it.
All right, thank you very much, is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? So, it was you.
Hey Mick. Oh, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Mick Sherba, I live at 4398 Oak Grove, and I'm also the president of the Broughton Park subdivision, I'd like to make one brief point, we have a, a policy within our subdivision that's decades old, that basically requires a homeowner to review any proposed improvement to their property with the adjacent property owners that are affected, in this case, that, and that policy has served us very well over the decades in avoiding conflicts and controversies later on. In this specific case, there are three adjacent property owners to the Nagers' property, and we had a, the Nagers reviewed their proposed location with the three property owners, the property owners had a lengthy discussion, some of the concerns were addressed, but the conclusion was, the three adjacent property owners within Broughton concluded that the west side of the Nagers' home was the more appropriate location because of the distance to anyone's house. If the generator were located on the east side of the Nagers' house, it would be a little over 30 feet from the living quarters of the house to the east, and the house to the east has a driveway, which is not going to attenuate any sound whatsoever, whereas the location on the west side of the Nagers' house has at least 170 feet distance between the generator and the home on 5565 Foreman, together with, you saw the, we call it the woods, the, the Mr. Wickers' backyards, has mature oak trees, but in the summer, there's also a thicket of buckthorn and choke cherry trees, so it's, it is, has a lot of summer foliage, not as much in the winter. So, the conclusion of the three Broughton property owners felt that it would be least impactful on all four if it were located on the west side of the house, even if it's located on the west side of the house, it is still closer physically to the house on the east than it is to the 5565 home, so, being on the west, I think the nearest house is at least 150 feet away, as opposed to being a little over 30 feet away if it were located on the east side.
Thanks very much, is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? So, I'll close the public hearing and then bring it back, nope, I'm sorry, sir, you're done, so have the applicant and respond.
The gas, the reason we're also putting there is all of our gas, our gas meters are not on the south side of the building, as the gentleman indicated, the electrical is, we've got three circuit breakers, and the main gas line is on the west side, that's another, that's where all of our AC units are, the gas meters are there, and if you, I don't know if you do know or not, it's easier to move electrical than it is gas, so, we have to fish electrical, I don't know, in our crawl space, I believe, but gas, trying to fish the gas lines over there, I mean, that's a, that's a whole different project.
Could you just elaborate a little bit on the screening that you're going to put up?
That, I, I, the contractors, I, I'm not entirely sure, and if there's screening required, which I understand it is now.
It's going to be screened to the height of the generator, evergreen, so that.
Yeah, then, yeah, is that what they're saying? She does the, she does the, that stuff, I do the technical stuff, yeah.
Okay, so what's this, do you, do you know what the screen?
There's the evergreen, overradios around it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, any other questions from the board? So can we get a motion on this? Oh, come on. Ah, we.
You guys are terrible.
We're welcoming you back.
I'm going to quit if this is how you guys are going to behave, who made the motions? I was gone for a year.
You were the most productive motion maker while you're here, we want you to uphold your.
Mr. Chairman, with regard, with regard to the dimensional variance requested at 4390 Oak Grove Drive, I am going to move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested, based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, because they would be unable to, let me backtrack for a second, I haven't done one of these, compliance with strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, because it would impact the neighbors, and would, with the driveway, noticing the driveway on the east side, I don't believe you could put the generator adjacent to the house, because you've got that walkway and driveway there, so it would still have to be away from the house, which becomes a greater impossibility, this is the appropriate location for this, it minimizes the impact on the community significantly, as mentioned, the house to the east is still closer to the generator than the house on the west, which abuts the property, and justice to the adjoining neighbors will be mitigated, if not made non-existent, by the arborvitae that need to be planted by the property owner, the property owner, in fact, has to go through some difficulty to put the generator there, to move the electrical service, gas service is already there, I had noticed the air conditioning on that side of the property already, it seldom makes sense to put mechanical units on opposite sides of the house, unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, given the site of the home on the property and its adjacency to the other properties in the subdivision, not, the site of the property itself and the location of the home on the site is certainly not self-created, with that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, for the generator and all permits must be obtained prior to construction, evergreen plantings will be required surrounding the generator on all three sides, to not only help mitigate the sound, but to hide it from public view, and they must be at or exceeding the height of the generator at the time of planting.
Support. Motion in support, any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I'm sorry?
Nay.
Nay, all right, so why don't we do a roll call?
Uh, Kalinsky?
Nay.
Ford?
Aye.
Geo Grande?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Henry?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion passes four to one.
Okay.
Thank you.
Congratulations, your request is granted, so, calling the next item, item number one, 675 Yarmouth, is the applicant ready?
Good evening, Brian Nieper, architect, here representing my clients at 675 Yarmouth in Bloomfield Village, so the, the home on Yarmouth, we had a, had a fire about a year ago, and it's, existing garage is non-conforming, the home's a little too close to Yarmouth in the front yard, so, we're asking your approval to rebuild the garage in its current location after, after it's going to be demoed due to the fire.
And it's a two-foot encroachment into the front yard setback?
Yes.
Okay.
Two-foot encroachment.
Any questions from the board? I'll open this to the public for comment, so, I'm sure we'll hear from Kathy.
Good evening, Kathy Weisenborn, representing Bloomfield Village Association, our board reviewed this, this proposal, the addition to the house and the updates to the exterior are very, are harmonious with our neighborhood, and we're extending, really, an existing non-conforming condition, so we do recommend approval of the variance.
Thank you, Kathy, is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I make a motion in, dimensional variance in regards to the appeal at 675 Yarmouth Road, for the front porch addition and quotient two feet into the required forty-foot setback, I move that the variance be approved as requested, based on the information submitted, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, because clients with the strict ordinance of the, would be unduly burdensome, because it would prevent the reasonable use of the property, and they're just rebuilding something that was already non-conforming, there's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, basically, because they're replacing what has been lost, as well as they do have the support of their association, and it is considered to be harmonious to the neighborhood, the unique circumstances of the property, again, that this was an existing floor plan that was already non-conforming, and because of that, it is not self-created, with that, if approved, the motion also includes applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support. We have motion in support, any discussion? All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. Calling next item, item 23325 Burning Bush Road.
Back again.
Okay.
Brian Nieper, architect, so this, this home for the Chappies on Burning Bush, it's a pretty challenging lot, it's a trapezoid shape, and it's also a corner, I believe the existing village setbacks along Burning Bush were originally only 30 feet, so it's, an existing house is non-conforming.
So, similar to the last one, you're extending six feet and expanding non-conforming?
Extensions on both fronts.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Open this to the public for comment.
I remember that, huh?
We reviewed this one as well, this is an existing non-conforming, the front porch extension will enhance the look of the home, and therefore, we believe that it's appropriate to grant a variance for that, the update to this home is, is beautiful, it's harmonious with our neighborhood, and we recommend approval of the variances.
Thank you, Kathy, is there anyone else that'd like to speak on it? We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for discussion or a motion.
I'll make another motion.
Thank you.
For the, in regards to the appeal at 3325 Burning Bush Road, for the setback variance, I move that the variance be approved as requested, based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, because, again, this is an existing non-conforming property, home, there's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, again, they do have the support of their association, this is also considered to be harmonious as well, and the unique circumstances of the property, because it has multiple frontages, which does impact the setbacks, and because of that, it is not self-created, with that said, if approved.
With that said, if approved, the motion also includes applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
Support.
So I have a motion in support, any discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Now we have item three, 335 Hamilton.
One more here tonight?
So you've got a turkey.
It's for the Forrester family.
Three strikes.
Forrester family here on Hamilton, pretty much the same situation. The existing village setbacks, I believe, were thirty feet on Hamilton. The entire house is into the front yard setback, and we're looking to make some additions into the front yard.
Okay, any questions from the board? Open this to the public for comment.
Me again. I represent both the association and I'm also a neighbor to this property. This is a beautiful renovation of this home. It's existing non-conforming, so the extension of the garage just extends that. We believe that it's harmonious with the neighborhood, complies with our guidelines, and we recommend approval of the variances.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else would like to speak on this? Close the public hearing and bring it back for a motion.
If you want to make a motion, Mr. Chairman. With regard to the appeal at 335 Hamilton Road for a dimensional variance, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty due to the existing non-conformance. And there is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that the association is supporting this. The unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the existing non-conformance, and this is obviously not self-created for the same reason. That being said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
Motion in support, any discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted. So calling the next item, item four, 1580 Oxford. Is the applicant ready?
Mr. Chair, I would like to, before we hear this applicant, share that I am a neighbor as well as a member of the association in which this resident resides. However, I still feel that I can vote and have my perspective be unbiased.
Very good. Thank you.
Proceed. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Patrick from Zeremin Company. I'm here representing our clients at 1580 Oxford Road. We're seeking a dimensional variance, permission for dimensional variance for two masonry columns, four feet tall, located seventy-two feet from the road. And I'm here to answer any questions.
They're illuminated? What type of illumination?
They are like a gas lantern. Face-mounted.
Any other questions from the board? Open this to the public for comment. Anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing, bring it back for a motion or discussion.
Nice use of this property. It's been underutilized for a long time. Mr. Chairman, with regard to the permission request and request for dimensional variance at 1580 Oxford Road, I would move that the permission request be approved as requested for the accessory structure. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The location of the accessory structures will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of the property due to its location or lighting. And as far as the dimensional variance, I'm going to move that it to be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty. The illuminated piers on this property are actually necessary. This is a very dark section of the community, and this is a dead-end road. If people are not careful, they can find themselves on Big Beaver. And having a good idea of where the, by the way, there is no outlet to Big Beaver, so that's a real problem. With that having, so being able to figure out where you are, while you're there, is important. And the location of the lighting on the side of the piers is certainly acceptable and in conjunction with how we like to see things here in the township. So with that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. I see no reason for additional evergreen screening for these.
Support.
So I have a motion in support, any discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So item five has been postponed, so we'll move to item six, 5605 Kenmore.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Bonamie, speaking on behalf of the homeowner of 5605 Kenmore. Upon purchasing the property under development, it was discovered that the prior owner had disturbed the twenty-five-foot natural feature setback. It is now the responsibility of the current owner to restore the setback. This request includes the restoration of the twenty-five-foot setback, the removal of invasive species, and a permission request to maintain a ten-foot-wide area of mowed lawn. This lawn area will provide access for the family's recreational use of the pond and also allow servicing of the pond to maintain the water quality. The proposed plantings include six trees, twenty-four shrubs, two-hundred-and-seventy-eight native grasses, over eight-hundred native perennials. Additional native seed mixes are proposed for the areas where the native, or the invasive species will be removed. We had ASTI environmental consultants out. They did a whole survey and analysis of the property and concluded that removal of invasive species combined with the proposed restoration plan would promote the health and wellness of the pond and foster habitat. The proposed improvements will benefit the immediate neighbors who also enjoy the natural habitat and will promote its sustainability for years to come. For these reasons, we feel the variance are warranted due to the long-lasting benefits of the proposed project.
So do we have any questions from the board? All right, so just when I went over this with the staff, if you, can we go back?
Yeah, I'm making my time right now. I'm sorry.
Can we go back to the picture where we had the different colors along the water there?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So to the right of the grass walkway, you know, the picture, there's not going to be evergreens in there, is it? Is that still native plantings there? See the brown area?
Here. So this dark green line, these are existing evergreens, trees that are here.
Okay.
This is still a natural area that's going to be basically, invasives are going to be removed, and that's where we're going to do the seed mix. So you have the seed mix here and seed mix here. This yellow is existing native growth that's basically, there's not really much invasives in it. And then we're going to be removing the sod that was installed along this mulch area here. And then you have this small grass path right there.
And so just after I went through the staff, what the variance is for is so that they can disturb the natural feature setback to, in the brown area, to plant.
Right here, to have this mowed lawn area.
And then, well, no, you're going to need to go, and you're going to put plantings in the brown area.
We're going to plant here with native plants.
Yep, and then there's going to be a grass walkway permanently in the, what was the natural feature setback, to provide access to the water.
Correct.
And that's just regular grass?
Mowed lawn.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
In regard, like, the prior construction, the owner bought the property under development, so the prior owner disturbed this environmental feature.
Yeah.
So he basically inherited the problem.
Yeah.
And obviously, they did the rest of the construction, finished it off.
Yeah.
And he's required regardless to do the mitigation. So we're just here to get that extra ten feet so that they can maintain the lake. They already did some treatments with Ego for the quality of the water and put in aerators and things like that.
Got it. So open this to the public, anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing and bring it back.
Mr. Chairman, I move, would you make a motion?
Sure.
If you would make a motion. So in regard to the appeal at 5605 Kenmore Road, for the requested variance, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, given the fact that what we are attempting to do is trying to restore the natural setback. And there is no adjustments to, injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that this action is actually going to improve the overall quality of the environment. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the fact that unfortunately, the buyers inherited this situation and are doing the appropriate things to mediate it. And for that same reason, it is not self-created. That being said, if approved, the motion must include, application for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the planting and plantings. And native seed mix encroaching into the natural feature setback, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
Motion in support, any discussion? All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So calling item seven, 1948 Sherwood Glen. Is the applicant ready?
I'm Hameet Kia of 1948 Sherwood Glen.
Eric Osburn, 4111 Lone Tree Road, Milford, Michigan.
So we, the installer, filled out their permit request, and it was requested to be installed in front of the house, as you see where it has been screened. And they were told that it has been approved, but they didn't see the fine print that it was actually approved for the backside. During the transferring of the information, there was a mistake made, so they assumed that it has been approved for the front as requested. So they came in and did the installation, and I had someone come in and put the fence, make sure that it's not visible from anywhere on the street. And there are lots of pictures that shows from different angles. There is no way you could see it from the street because of the distance. The only way you could see it is like at the entrance to the house, if you stand on the steps, you can see the side view of it. Or if you go on the other side, still on my property, you could see it from inside the property. But outside the property, this location is not visible. Now, the reason this location was chosen was that they surveyed the house. The electric meter is in, that's where it is, exactly, next to it. The gas meter is in front of the house. And any other location, like in the back, we have got the deck and the windows that are the sliding doors or whatnot, which would not allow it. On the right-hand side, there are a couple of windows, and if we go further down, it encroaches to the setback from the neighbor. And worst of all is that on the south side of our house, we have put boulders and pebbles and whatnot, because from the house in front of us, the water runs in the winter and in the summer when it rains and in the spring. And it is so strong that moves the boulders, and really, erosion was a big problem. So there is no way one could put a mechanical device in that area adjacent to, you know, the neighbor on the south side of it. So this was identified as the sweetest spot, the only location that is doable, so we are requesting that you give us the variance for this. So I've got more pictures of everywhere on the street, I can show it to you, that shows that it's really not visible from the street.
That, what is that screening? It looks like, is that just plastic, or is...
Well, right now, boxwood have been planted inside it, and then IV screen has been put around it while waiting for the boxwood to grow up to forty inches that would cover the front. So in a matter of a year, I guess the boxwood would come up enough that this would not be needed. But it is, you know, plastic, the artificial IV, and it looks great from the, if you come into the property to see it.
Yeah, well, that picture is quite old, right? It doesn't...
This picture is from the summer.
Yeah, so what does it look like now?
Okay, good point.
Do you have something?
Is that how it goes? This is from one side of the street, you see, in the winter, in the snow. This is another view.
So if that's the front of the house, where is the generator?
So could you, that's what I thought.
Yeah, that location.
That's where it is.
Okay.
It's about like seventy feet from the road, so it's not that visible. And then...
We don't know if we'd get that, huh?
This way. So I've taken it from the south side, the middle, and the north side of the street, that you don't see anything. And in the summer, of course, it's not really visible at all.
Do we have any other questions from the board at this time? I'll open this to the public for comment. Anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing and bring it back for further questions or discussion, so...
Did they get their building permits already done?
Yeah, I did explain, we met with Brian this morning. There was a, there was a communication between our building staff as well as the applicant, and the permit was released, not understanding that this was a front yard and that it required a variance. So the applicants were notified and then immediately made ZBA application.
So they did receive their building, like applicants as they're supposed to?
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Permitted, but there was just a mistake?
Correct.
Perfect.
So I'm inclined to grant the variance, however, I need some real screening.
Screening, exactly.
Not some Kmart screening. And boxwood is too short. It will not get tall enough. And if I remember the ordinance correctly, it requires a screen...
To the height, at the time.
At the height, to the height at the time of planting, not when it eventually grows.
In twelve months.
Correct.
Yeah, so, okay, so...
But planting now would not be feasible.
I understand. So it's going to have to wait until we, well, I don't know, the weather's, it might be fifty in a couple of weeks.
Okay. Well, don't tell that to the applicant for the ice skating rink.
Isn't that the truth? All right. Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request for a dimensional variance at 1948 Sherwood Glen, I'm going to move that the application for the variance be approved as submitted. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. This is, in fact, the best location for this item. There was a mix-up in the permitting process, and there is no current injustice to the neighbors because of its location. Circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, this is where the utilities are for the property. And I would argue that this is not self-created. It may be jointly created, but it is not self-created. And as a consequence, it should be approved. With that having been said, however, necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing mechanical unit, and there must be evergreen screening as soon as is practicable, that will be to the height of the mounted generator.
Support.
Motion in support. So do you understand the motion?
Yes, I understand that I have to get perhaps arborvitae or whatnot to put in there.
Yeah.
Hopefully, you grant me that we have to wait till the...
Yeah, yeah.
Season is favorable.
Yeah, so that's working for now, but just longer to understand that, okay.
And the permits are secured already.
Got it.
Correct.
So any other discussion on the motion? So all who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, item eight, 4920 Dryden.
That would be something like major.
That's why we're...
Sure, sure, yeah.
Like eleven degrees?
Hi, how are you?
You have the floor.
Yes, good evening, Board. My name is Dan McClish from McClish Building, representing the owners at 4920 Dryden Lane. We were previously in front of the board for a pool house last summer. We went to build the pool house. During the process, the owner added a door wall to the pool house, so therefore, we came in for HVAC permit. So we're here for the HVAC, the mini-split thing, seeing the lower right... So we're here for the HVAC, the mini-split thing, see in the lower right picture there. We installed it and then once we called for a rough building inspection, it was brought to our attention that the mini-split could not be attached to the existing poolhouse that we're building at the time. So we applied for ZBA. We have screened the entire yard. We do have, the neighbor ironically, Mr. Brian Butler, he's the HOA president, so he also sent a letter in favor of that too. So I have one of those for your, for your records as well. Also, a current picture that you can't really see, like on the pictures that we submitted. But if you'd like, I could show you a picture showing all the screening around all three sides of the property.
So I see, you're saying the perimeter screening for the property is what you're relying on?
Correct. We put nine-foot western seeders around all three sides of the property. Ball to ball, you can't even seed in the property that way. We also, in our original landscape plan, we had shrubbery in front of the unit that during the summer months, which I know you need to have screened, but I just was showing that picture that it already is screened on the perimeter. But if the board would like to see screening, another layer of it, that no one can even see, the owner's not opposed to that.
Isn't that typically what we require, Patty? Don't we?
At the placement, yes.
Yeah, at the placement, that's what I thought, okay.
Correct.
So that's a great offer, we'll take you up on that.
Sure, no problem.
Any other questions from the board? Open this to public for comment? Anyone? Close the public hearing, bring it back for a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
In regards to the appeal at 4920 Dryden, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. For the existing ground-mounted mechanical unit located not immediately adjacent to the residential building, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. Basically because this appears to be probably one of the better places for this unit as it has other utilities there. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, the perimeter of the property is heavily screened as well as the applicant has offered to add additional screening at the unit, which will be part of the motion. There's unique circumstances with the property, the existing floor plan, and because of that, it is not self-created. With that said, if approved, the motion also includes applications for all necessary permits must be made within five business days for the existing ground-mounted mechanical unit. Additional evergreens shall be required to screen the existing ground-mounted mechanical unit from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the ground-mounted mechanical unit at the time of planting for 12 months of the year.
Support. So I have motion in support, any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you. I just have one quick question. We already have a permit for, do we still need to apply?
No.
Oh, okay.
That's just the standard.
All right, okay. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
So calling item nine, 3721 Shallowbrook.
Good evening. My name is Sam Yaldo and I'm a builder. My brother is the owner of the house that I just completed. And we're trying to get a variance for pool equipment that we would like to install as close as possible to the pool. We tried before to place those, the equipment on, on the east side of the property, but we were denied by the previous Board of Zoning Appeals. So we found a location right against a retaining wall on the south side of the property, which is kind of obscured for almost, from almost everything. It was, we were supposed to have it for a barbecue grill, but we abandoned that thought because we need a good location for the pool equipment that's as, as close as possible to the pool for efficiency purposes. On the, on the north side of the property, we have zero, zero room except for the gas and electric meter and we had to put in a new generator. And the reason is, there's a sanitary sewer easement that's 35 foot. It's unheard of before, but because of the creek running through there, it had to be very wide and it's at the edge of the house. So this is, we believe, an appropriate location that's far away from the neighbors to the east. And the neighbor to the, to the south has absolutely no objection to it, neither does our neighbor to the north.
And what's the screening?
It's going to be, I guess.
Evergreen?
Arborvitae, I believe.
Arborvitae?
Yeah, I believe it's.
Always a good choice.
Yeah, arborvitae is what it says on the plan.
Always a good choice. Any other questions?
That's because you own an arborvitae farm.
Open for public comment. You can come up and.
Hi, my name is Hal Zaima. Thank you for the board for being here. Patty, Andrea, thank you. I am representing the president of the homeowners association, which is sitting right there, but he's also an affected neighbor. And I'm representing the three neighbors in the back. I applaud the Yaldos for changing the plan from having it back towards our property line, towards a new location. One of the things that we're concerned about, is it coming up?
Yeah, I don't understa, yeah, I'm having some difficulties.
Okay. One of the things we're concerned about is in late summer, we were concerned about the additional foliage, mature trees being cut down. And we contacted the Bloomfield Township Environment Engineering and Environmental Services Department, Alex Kozlowski.
We're only talking about the pool equipment.
Right. But I'll, I'll show you the visual. No? No, no?
I'm having a hard time pulling this up onto the screen.
I can do, I can do this.
So some, you're going to link the cutting down of trees to the placement of the pool equipment?
Yes. This is what the property looked like.
So if I was a judge, I'd say counselor be quick here with the.
Yes, sir.
Connection.
Yes, your honor.
Okay. I'm not a judge.
That's what the prop, property line looked like before. See all the mature trees? So they denuded the property and that's not the extent of it. They, after that, they cut additional trees on the, the east side of the property. So that's what it looks like now versus the mature trees. So now the, the pool property is going to be visible and in the evening. It's much worse. So what we're asking for is, the township has been asking for a tree restoration plan.
So we, we are not deciding a tree restoration plan, we're talking about.
Okay.
Placement of the pool equipment, which we've been told is going to be screened. So that's the only we can decide.
Okay. So you can't make a contingent upon a tree restoration plan, which is in violation of the township ordinance?
That's not in front of us.
Okay, thank you. I was trying to bring it up in front of me, but I guess it doesn't work that way. Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman, can I clarify this?
Sorry.
Just to give them some comfort or give the, the board some comfort. If necessary.
No, we're.
He may, he may actually compound the problem because then we get into a discussion about something that isn't relevant.
Yeah. So, so we're, we're fine, you don't have to address that because that's not in front of us. We can't, we can't address the trees that were taken down, so. Would you like to, is there anyone else like to speak on this item? So close the public hearing. So did you want to come back up?
Yes.
So you don't need to address the trees, I just want to be clear that this is going to be completely screened.
Yes, absolutely.
With arborvitae.
Absolutely.
To the height of the unit so that nobody can see it.
Much higher than they.
Just because we got some comments that this is very visible. So you're clear on that?
We have no issue with that, absolutely not.
All right.
Never had any issue with that.
Ready for a motion?
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm willing to make a motion. So in regard to the appeal at 3721 Shallowbrook Drive, for the dimensional variance, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all of the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, given the layout of the, the property and the need to make sure that we place this in a appropriate location based on the usage of this particular equipment. There is no adjustments to, injustice and injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that we are going to be providing the appropriate screening. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the presentation that was made this evening and it is not self-created due to the same factors. Now, if approved, the motion must include, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the ground-mounted mechanical unit and additional granite, evergreen plantings must be installed to screen the ground-mounted mechanical unit from public view 365 days a year and must meet or exceed the height of the ground-mounted mechanical unit at the time of planting.
For. Motion in support, any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So calling item 114612 West Maple.
Ten, Ted.
I'm sorry, item 10.
Shallowbrook, 3730 Shallowbrook.
Good evening, Board. My name is Michael Fox. I'm the homeowner at 3730 Shallowbrook. I'm requesting a variance to relocate our pool equipment to a new location that's not adjacent to our house. We want to, our, the way the land is set up, the house is at a higher elevation than the pool. 20 years ago, we updated our equipment. We put the pool equipment adjacent to the house at the higher elevation for 20 years. Every summer, it's been a struggle working with it. We now are updating our, our pool equipment and we're requesting to move it to a lower elevation so it'll work better. I talked to my neighbors. The one neighbor, he has no issue whatsoever and we're, it's going to be adjacent to a wooded area between our homes, can't see it from the streets. We're happy to green-screen it also.
Great suggestion, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Open this to the public for comment? Close the public hearing. I'll just say, based on tonight's agenda, Dick's Sporting Goods and Bloomfield Sporting need a lot of pool equipment and water wings and bathing suits, there's a lot of, a lot of pool stuff going on.
As long as they have a generator to.
I was going to say the generator, yeah.
A lot of generators too, okay.
Oh, I'll make.
Okay, thank you.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yep.
All right, I'll make a motion in regards to the appeal at 3730 Shallowbrook Drive for dimensional variance for a ground-mounted mechanical unit and pool equipment not located immediately adjacent to the building. I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because this is actually an upgrade that actually provides reasonable use of the equipment. I do understand what it means to make it more efficient by lowering the elevation. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors. It appears that this resident has talked to an adjoining neighbor and had that support. Is also offered to be screened, which will possibly part of the motion. The unique circumstances of the property, again, with the existing floor pan, plan with the house being elevated and the equipment now being at a lower level, I'm sure will, will assist with that. And so that is also unique. And because of that, it is not self-created. And with that said, the motion also includes, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the ground-mounted mechanical unit. Additional evergreen planting shall be required to screen the ground-mounted mechanical unit from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the mounted mechanical unit at the time of planting for 12 months of the year.
Support.
So I have motion in support, any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you, and go Lions.
Oh, yes, go Lions.
So calling item 114612 Maple.
Good evening again, I'm Stephen Bonmy for 4612 West Maple Road. The owner had removed existing landscape piers. The piers were rebuilt with new materials, but the gate remains unchanged. The original piers featured coach lights on the top, increasing the overall height of the structure. The new design incorporates three downlights mounted underneath the pier cap, which provide illumination without casting unwanted light onto the neighboring properties. This lot is a unique shape and a budding neighbor, neighboring residences to the west and a DTE substation to the east. The gate serves as a clear marker that the driveway is for private residents distinguishing it from the adjacent utility station. There are many similar piers within the township and since these are actually shorter and used a revised lighting method, the new piers with the existing gate represent an improvement for both the property and the community at large. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions from the board? I'll open this to public for comment? Anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing, bring it back for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request for dimensional variance and permission request, it's 4612 Maple, West Maple, my apologies. I would move that the permission request be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with section 42-7.6 standards. The size of the accessory structure is compatible with adjoining properties based on the fact that it actually is lower than the previously existing structure and illuminated in a far better manner with downlighting as opposed to on-top coach lighting. The gate is remaining. And as far as the dimensional variance is concerned, I'm going to move that it also be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, frankly because on Maple, which is not only heavy traffic but at a reasonable speed, being adjacent to the substation and other property makes it difficult to mark, to demarcate where the entrance to this property is. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because this does in fact provide a more compatible lighting for the community. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, given the site of the property and its location to the substation, none of which is self-created. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the piers and wing walls. I do not see a need for additional evergreen screening.
Support.
Motion in support, any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So calling item 12960 Dedham.
Good evening, Scott Kreisbender with BPD Paving Services here for the homeowner of 960 Dedham Court.
So we have a couple of two-foot-high retaining walls due to the grade and width of the pool deck. You know, typically, the ordinance requires eight feet and you want four feet.
Yeah, so the homeowner thought he had more deck space on the top and then he didn't count for the two-foot that he lost for the automatic pool cover, which then left him only six feet of deck space on both ends and no room for chairs. So that's why we're requesting more space.
Any other questions from the board? Open this to public for comment? Close the public hearing, then bring it back? So these are pretty low retaining walls, so.
And this property has some unique topography, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, and frankly, I think the retaining walls may look better than the sloping topography in which, which is not as clear and well-defined.
No. Correct. It's an improvement. We're helping.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, with regard to the request for dimensional variance in 1960 Dedham Court, I'm going to move that the dimensional variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would do, would be unduly burdensome. It would significantly minimize the utility of the pool and pool deck, which actually would decrease. would decrease value of this property and adjoining property because of that situation. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because, in fact, this is an enhancement to the topography and an enhancement to the property itself. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated because of the topography. Certainly, the topography is not self-created. With that having been said, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the retaining wall, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So calling the next item, item 13, 3497 Bennington.
Good evening. My name is Joe Cubera. I live at 3497 Bennington Court, and I am here to request permission to create an annual seasonal temporary accessory structure, an ice rink, in my rear yard during the winter This is essentially the plans that I have for the materials. There'll be a white plastic board that won't be more than 12 to 18 inches. They'll have those support brackets on the sides to keep it in, and there'll be a liner in there. We'll fill it with water. It'll freeze, hopefully. And when, as the spring thaw comes, we'll take it down. It's in my rear yard, so my yard's actually a pie shape, so it works out well that it can't be seen from the street. We're abiding by all the setbacks. I think one of my pictures there has, I guess, it's 70 feet to one of the, I guess that would be the northwest lot line, and I think it's 31 to the south and 40 to the southeast. So we're abiding by all the setbacks. We've received HOA approval, so we submitted that to them in October. We sat down with them, and the HOA has given us approval, which I have. I think I submitted as well. Our entire yard is screened with cedars and pines that are on my side of the fence, so it's my screening that's screening it. And then I have about eight letters of support, some of them my adjoining neighbors, some of them other people in my neighborhood as well, and that's everything that I have.
So let me just ask you a few things. So you're good, when we make this motion, you're going to be limited to daytime hours? That's, you can't play at night?
I get, well, I think it said there was no lighting.
No lighting.
No lighting and no artificial refrigeration.
No lighting.
Correct. Yes.
So you're aware of that? And then we're going to put in, the rink's going to need to be removed by May 1st, 2025, and grass restored upon removal?
No problem.
So essentially, this is going to be like a one-year trial for you to make sure that you're complying with those conditions. We don't get any requests, and then you're going to come back.
Okay.
Next year, and then we can give you a multi-year approval.
Okay.
As long as this trial period goes as everyone would like. Sound good?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. So I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this?
My name is Mike Smith, and I live at 3571 Brookshire Drive. I am co-chairman of the Architectural Control Committee of Westchester Village and also a neighbor of Joe's by backyard butts up directly against his backyard. I have viewed his property many times, and there seems to be adequate screening of the property. It's not going to be seen from the road, and these are mature pine trees that are around the property on all three sides of the backyard, and we gave our full approval, the homeowners' association did, to the project.
Thanks for your comments and your role in the Westchester Village. Any other people like to comment? Close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for a motion, discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
In regards to the appeal at 3497 Bennington Court for proposed ice rink, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of the property due to, he does have the support of the adjacent property owner. He also has the support of the HOA. He's also taken the time, which I very much appreciate, to talk to other neighbors, and it meets all of the setbacks. It appears to be a very well-screened lot. So with that said, if approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year for the ice rink. The use of the ice rink is limited to daytime hours. No illumination is permitted for the ice rink, and the rink must be removed by May 1st, 2025, and grass restored upon removal.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
And do I still need to get a permit then for this, or is this?
Because there's an ordinance permit that you'll have to apply for?
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Calling item 14, 4805 Charing Cross.
Good evening. My name is David Dedvukai, 4805, Charing Cross. My architect, Juan Pena. We are here seeking a variance approval for two structures. One is a pool house, and the other is a two columns for a gate. More details?
Just sort of the height, you know.
So the height of the pool house is higher than typical ordinance standards. We're requesting a 24-foot variance or a height of the structure. The reason behind that is it does have a walkout, and we would like to have some type of architectural similarities to the existing home up front. Now, we do meet all setbacks on the rear, on east and west as well.
And talk a little bit more about the height of the illuminated driveway piers and the gates. So the gate's six feet?
Yeah, so the gate would be six, well, actually, the gate would be six and a half feet, and the piers would be six and a half feet, and the gate would be six foot. Both would be illuminated as well with gas lanterns.
And those lanterns are on the side?
On the front side.
On the front side, okay.
Facing Charing Cross.
Okay.
Do you have those drawings, or?
No, I'm just getting you in the right, and so why, why do you want the six feet? Because of the size of the house?
Yeah, with the aesthetics of the house, the elevations, I think it matches well with, you know, the facade as well.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to the public for comment. Does anyone like to speak on this? You can come up to the podium, just so you don't have to strain your voice and so we can hear you better. Just give us your name and address. We've waited all night, so we want to.
Well, no, hi.
Want to give you the microphone.
My name is Nancy Harrison. Brian Ford, the home property owner, and I live at 4950. Our back property lines a butt with property owner. So I just, we had a few questions. I can't really tell. The expanse of his property along the back of his property is, the expanse is four of the properties on the other side, okay? So we're not sure where our property fits in his plan. It's unclear.
So does that help you here? Is this?
Well, where does that?
I believe you're, if you're next to.
We're between 4950.
But you see your address number there?
Pardon?
Isn't your number one?
We're 4950.
So you'd be on the corner on the south side. The pool house would be on the east side. Actually, it would be a buffer for the train station as well, for the train tracks.
Gotcha. Okay.
So I think we're probably over 200 feet away from the corner.
From our.
If not more.
Okay, I was just trying to, it was unclear in the documentation exactly where that would be. Secondly.
Oh, I know where that is now.
With the idea that it's an actual 10-foot higher than the normal approval, is the, is that full expanse, 24 feet, going to be screened right from the get-go? I mean, it says, you know, the 14-footer would have to be, and so would the 24 be screened? That, you know.
Well, we'll ask the applicant that, so, well, no, you ask the question to us, and then he'll come back up, and we'll, he's thinking about that right now.
And then the question about the 16-foot variance, you know, our, you know, maybe that's not an issue to be discussed at this, but our neighborhood association variance is 25 feet, right? So is that going to be accommodated? So those are basically the questions that I had.
So we enforce the township zoning ordinance, not neighborhood?
I understand, and that's what I said. I wasn't 100% sure that that should be brought up with that, but you're saying that it's already going to be.
You actually exceed it by technical.
So you got to address your comments to us. I mean, I.
Fine, I'm unfamiliar.
I realize we're trying to expedite things here because of the late hours, so I'm trying to help you. But you're supposed to talk to us. You ask us the questions, and then he responds.
Okay.
If we follow protocol.
I think my questions have been asked, and I will then defer.
Okay, well, thank you so much for waiting this long.
Oh, my pleasure.
Very entertaining meeting.
Just to answer our questions, yes, our setbacks exceed, actually, the subdivisions requirements, close to 35 feet. And we will have, obviously, a natural buffer with evergreens along the fence lines. Being that the pool house is so far away, we won't have it, because there'll be a pool in front of it, and there'll be more landscaping on the east side as well, or the west side, I should say.
So what is that? What is that landscaping, and how high is it?
It should be on the plan that we provided. But if you look at the back lot there.
Okay, so you haven't got, so we've got the type of trees.
Yeah, I mean, the evergreens, you know, hopefully, they grow as high as, you know, 26-plus feet. And there's also a natural buffer existing on the neighbor's side.
So I don't normally do this, but because you waited so long, I'll make an exception. What do you want to ask?
Thank you. I just wanted clarification again. Are the, at the inception and building of the pool house, is it, is it screened up to that?
So that's what we're talking about. So because it's a pool house, so let's just.
To be determined.
Yeah. So.
To be determined?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's up to us.
Yeah, it's up to us.
That's up to us, yeah.
So it's not like a fence, if that's what you're thinking. So we're, you know, we've screened, fenced, so the pool house isn't necessarily the same thing. So I don't know, we answered your question, we haven't decided that yet, so we're taking in a number of factors. That's under discussion. So, so do you know, could you commit to the height of those trees?
I'd commit to the height along the fence line as far as, you know, because again, her property or really every other property around us is at least 35 feet away from.
All right, so I haven't closed the public hearing yet, so I think we have another gentleman wants to speak, so I sort of gave an accommodation because of the.
My name is Brian Ford, and I live at 4950 Dryden Lane. He says that this pool house is going to be 35 feet from the lot line, but this paperwork shows that it's only 16 feet. That's what?
I think he's referring to the notice. Which were you referring to? Yeah.
16 feet.
He's referring to the notice that states that it's required to be at least 16 feet. That's actually language from our zoning ordinance as it relates to an accessory structure. That's not talking about this one specifically. It's just in general, it has to be at least 16 feet. The applicant has indicated that it's 35 feet, so they far exceed the 16-foot requirement.
That'd be great. Thank you.
So you have quite a unique piece of property here and a large pool house, so what can you give us to work with about the screening for it?
As far as, along the fence line, we're buffering it as much as we can between all neighbors around us.
The height, though. We need to know the height.
Well, now, the height of it, yes, it's 24 feet, but our house is much higher than the exist, the pool house we intend to build. Yes, it's 10 feet higher, but our house sits probably 10 feet higher on elevations, so the scale will be, it'll fit essentially the property. If we were to have a 14-foot pool house on top, it would be lower, almost lower than our back porch. And I know that sounds kind of funny, but we want the elevations to match.
I understand, yeah, I understand exactly what you're trying to accomplish.
And again, it's really, it's also a deterrent with the train track being so close to us because to the east of us, that's the ITC lines, and then it's the train track.
Right, so, I mean, we have language in our, you know, typical motions that say, you know, evergreen plantings will be required to screen the accessory structures, which would be the pool house, from public view, and must meet or exceed the height of the structures at the time of planting. So are you okay with that language?
Now, when you say the, how close is that to the pool house? I mean, we don't want to block the sun as well either, right? Because we're going to have it along the fence line as we show.
Right, so I'm just saying, are those going to be high enough to screen the pool house from public view?
I believe so, yes. Because again, the properties on the.
So if we put that in the motion, and that's a requirement, you'll meet it. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before you make the motion, though, I'd like to offer a thought. The ordinance is.
Well, I'm not making the motion, I'm just.
I understand. The ordinance is designed to mitigate any site-created issues by an accessory structure, swing set, treehouse.
Yep.
Pool, generator.
Yeah, yeah.
Stuff like.
Fence.
This, this is architecturally not something that needs to be screened.
Completely screened, yeah.
That's my observation.
Yeah, okay.
So the need for it to be screened from floor to 24 feet in height may not be necessary. And I'm going to leave it up to my colleagues to decide what they want, but I think in this instance, this is not something that needs to be screened. If it was going to be, if it had an open, an open-top bar with cleat lights so that you could see, you could see it from a mile away, that's a different story, but that isn't what this is either.
It's a roof.
And so I'm, I think this is less of an important issue based on the intent of the ordinance as opposed to what the words themselves say.
Got it.
How do you feel about the height of 24 feet?
I think the height makes a lot of sense. I think, I think keeping it at 14 feet makes it look, makes it look like a barn on this property, considering the house itself. Now, that's, that's my aesthetics as a realtor. I'll let the builder decide if it's appropriate or not, but looking at the scope of the property, something that's only 14 feet high on this would look like it was left over from a previous property.
Yeah, I would agree with my colleague that the intent here is to make something that's matching with the house and the scale of the house.
Yeah.
And especially with the grade change you're talking about, I think that the height is not an issue, and then I believe the grades continue to go down on that property, right?
Correct.
So depending on the plantings that are planted along the fence line, the visibility, again, just because of line of sight, 24-feet trees would not necessarily be needed to block. You may be able to get away with a shorter tree in order to block from public view. And then the front of the property is going to be blocking that pool house anyways.
Yes.
So even though it is of nice architectural design, it still wouldn't be a hindrance to the view.
All right, and I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay.
What?
So who?
All right.
Who will bring? We're in the home stretch here, so let's push to the finish line.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, with regard to the permission request and request for dimensional variance at 4805 Charing Cross, a property I'm familiar with as a matter of fact, I would move that the permission request for the pool house piers and gates be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards. The location of the accessory structure will not hinder or discourage the adjacent use of property due to the layouts of the property themselves, elevation, and the fact that on one side, all you have is railroad track. With that having been said, with the dimensional variance, I'm going to move that it also be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant has demonstrated all of the standards for practical difficulty. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance. practical difficulty, compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because the, a height of 14 feet, for example, on the pool house would actually diminish the quality of the structure, which we do not want to do in the township. We want to have good, well-thought-out properties representing a community of substance. And I would also suggest that the, the piers, again, are necessary. This is a, an unusual section of our community where we have a bridge, railroad track, elevation, all of that coming into play, where the piers do make it necessary with illumination. Unique circumstances of the property, I think I've pretty much described it already, and none of that, of course, is self-created. With that having been said, all necessary permits must be made within one year for the retaining walls and, am I on the right one?
Yes.
Yes. Retaining walls and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. We will need a single-family affidavit for the pool house, however, and that needs to be submitted to the township. There will need to be a hold harmless statement for the, on file with the township for the gates. And while some evergreen plantings will be required for screening, I do not believe that they need to be to the height of the accessory structure, the pool house in particular, at the time of planting.
Support. Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
So calling item 151236, Desiacs Avenue.
Hi, I'm John Hadad from Clear Choice Custom Decks in, in representation of Rebecca Bieri, our client. So the existing house is built six feet off the side yard. The setback is 16 feet, and we're wanting to build a deck off the back of the house that's in line with the existing side of the house, which is six feet off the side yard setback. So we need a variance of, I think, 10 feet.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Open this to the public for comment. Close the public comment, bring it back. So it's in line with the house.
The house has already given a variance to make this, so.
Pretty, pretty simple request.
I'll try to make the motion.
I open and close it, yeah.
Oh, you didn't do, you didn't do it, did you? You want me to do the public comment?
I did, no, I did. I'll do it again. Open, anyone like to make a comment on this? I'm opening the public hearing.
We got, we got, we got three hearings left and four people. There's no way somebody wants to talk about this.
So I'm closing the public hearing then for the motion.
All right, let's see how this goes. For the motion to approve the dimensional variance in regards to the appeal at 1235 Dyex, DX?
26.
Something, yeah, Desiacs.
Desiacs?
Desiacs. I think so, yeah.
For the setback variance, I move to approve as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because the compliance with strict letter of the ordinance would unduly be burdensome because the house is already built on a variance being six feet from the property line. There is no undue justice to the adjoining neighbors because it's already six feet from the property line. The unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated. Again, it's already built within six feet of the property line, and this was not self-created because the house was built this way prior to the owner getting in. With that, if approved, the applicant, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support. Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item 167220 Camden Court. Hot Tub.
Good evening, guys. I'm Ted Sherman, the homeowner. Thank you very much for spending all this time going through all these different matters, and I hope this one's a simple one. It's about a hot tub. It's incorporating on our existing deck, which is, we got a variance a number of years ago. It's a couple feet into the setback. So we're looking to add a hot tub, and it's going to be incorporated into the deck itself, so it's not going to be on top of the deck. It's going to be kind of incorporated in a structure next to the deck, so it's going to be basically part of the deck. You won't even know it's there. It's going to be surrounded by different arborvitaries and so on, and different shrubberies. So if you walked by it, you wouldn't even know it's there. So it's basically a birthday gift to myself and my wife returning 55. Always wanted a hot tub. So that's kind of what it is, and I tried to describe it as best I could with different pictures and drawings, but.
So it's not extending beyond the footprint of the deck right now? It's, it's being cut.
Right, it doesn't extend any further.
You're cutting the deck out and laying it in, into the.
Essentially, yes. It's going to be part of the deck itself.
Okay, all right. And isn't any higher?
No, it's actually going to be probably a little bit lower.
Sunken down, okay.
Sunken down a bit, so you won't even see it.
All right. Any questions? Open this for public. Any comments on the hot tub? Close the public hearing, bring it back.
I'll make a motion. In regards to the, I'll start with the permission request first. In regards to the appeal at 7220 Camden Court for the accessory structure of a proposed hot tub, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of accessory structure is appropriate for the neighborhood. Hot tubs are very popular. I'm glad that you gave your wife, you and your wife gave yourself a birthday present. So I think that is wonderful. In terms of the dimensional variance, also for the hot tub encroaching seven feet into the required 35-yard yard setback, I also move that that be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because actually, this is an accessory structure that is actually going on an existing deck that was actually approved even though it was encroaching into the setback. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because, again, they're putting it on a deck. It's going to be part of an existing deck, and it will be possibly sunken, and the applicant has also mentioned that he is planning on providing some screening. The unique circumstances of the property, again, this is a property that actually the footprint of the deck was already encroaching, and because of that, it is not self-created. With that said, if approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation. Additional evergreen plantings shall be required to screen the hot tub from public view and must meet or exceed the height of the hot tub at the time of planting for 12 months of the year.
Support. So I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Calling item 176785 Telegraph.
Hello, my name is Dean Mayberger. I'm here with, from Philip Sign and Lighting. I'm representing my client, Fabrizio of Vitale Design. And we currently, he has a, do we have some slides? Here we go. Great. So we're requesting an additional sign for this building. The building currently is only allowed one sign. We have, we have also added two other signs to this wall. They don't have the opportunity for any ground signage, and as it stands right now, they don't have any visibility at all. I think this is very important. We have a lot of endorsements from several people that would love to see this company as a part of the community.
Well, and you've got a very long building. We typically will give an additional sign. You're on Telegraph, you have high traffic, so. Any other questions from the board? Open this for public comment. Close the public comment.
No takers.
Okay. So this is a common variance that we generally get. We got recommendation view, so.
Want to make a motion, Chairman?
Go right ahead.
Okay. In regard to the appeal at 6785 Telegraph Road for the dimensional variance, I move the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, given the layout of the building and the desire to attract the appropriate attention to this business, which we are happy will be joining our community. There is no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that they are well-familiar with the building, they are well-familiar with the signage, and that this signage would not be inappropriate in any way. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated, given the above, and it's also not self-created due to the above. Application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you, sir. Admit.
So calling the last item, item 18.
We save the best for last.
Thank you for your time. John Pacina, on behalf of Health Quest Physical Therapy, we look forward to doing business in your, in your city. We're actually for variance on size of the sign, actually at the recommendation of the landlord and our sign company, just so it's consistent with the signs that are already existing on the building. And there's a, there's a picture, unfortunately, you can only see part of the Frames Unlimited sign that the actual previous boards that has been there forever, and it's huge.
And so again, we have the notes from the design review meeting, was recommended to us, I think we're good. Open this to the public for comment. Any comment, they're being done, bring it, close the public comment, bring it back for a motion.
I can do, I'll do it, I'll try this again. For the motion to approve the dimensional variance in regards to the appeal at 6614 Telegraph Road, I move to approve the variance as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with strict letter of the law for the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because you would not be able to find the bill, the business, other signs in that area, as well as you were suggested to match the signs so that it did look symmetrical with the way the building is laid out. There is no undue justice to the adjoining neighbors by the reason I just stated, that it will match the layout and the aesthetics of the building. Unique circumstance of this property have been demonstrated. Everybody else has signs in a similar size, a similar shape. This is not self-created because you were just moving to a building that was already pre-existing. As such, if approved, the motion must include the application for all necessary permits must be made one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to the installation.
Support. Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, motion to adjourn?
No, we have to.
Did you apply for a permit?
We have to elect officers.
Election of officers.
For 2025.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, so which the first, what's the first nomination we need to make?
Whoever's not here gets it.
Oh, okay.
Just to remind the board, there's no term limits, so board members can hold their